All right, I'd like to call the meeting at 7 o'clock. And the first thing to do is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next would be approval of agenda. All right, Nick, do we have a second?
Sure.
All right, Len, does anyone, anymore, does anything need to be added or anything? Or is everybody content?
You see? Yeah, I can make it bigger.
All right, I think we're good. Let's see, all those in favor? It's everybody? Excellent. Okay, public input and announcements. Is anybody? All right, there's none of that. All right, so then, the next thing would be approval of the minutes for 11:06, 24. Motion? Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, thank you. You want the second?
I'll take the second.
Okay, great. Discussion. Does anybody have any corrections or anything they saw?
I saw, well, this is kind of in the past, but it said our community engagement committee meeting was going to be at 6:30 and it was at 6:00. So, yeah, but it already happened, so I don't know that it matters, but it did get a little confusing, I think.
Anything else? We can make the amendment, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so with that change, all those in favor? Is everybody? Great. So the next thing is student representative update. It's your time to shine.
Hello, want some patches? Student representative. Not much has changed since I introduced myself to you guys two weeks ago, except Interact Club, we had our Veterans Day dinner. It was very successful, I'd like to thank. This is Williams for attending. Hope to see you guys all there next year, rest of you. We made $1,000 and we already have, what do you have with that? It was about $300 more than last year. So, very excited. And then again, invite you to the, our showings of Clue this weekend, Friday, 7:00, Saturday at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. And I'm probably going to duck out after my speech because we're busy show week.
Totally understandable.
And then, something that happened today is the chamber singers. We, all 18 of us, we bussed us over to Genesis Transitional Housing Home, who the type, name of it is. And we sang three songs for all the residents there and they loved it.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice thing to do and they brought us back. Took only like an hour and a half. It's very, felt very good. Any questions, anything going on?
I have, what is the Interact Club?
We're the community service club from Milver. We're associated with the Wongford Memorial Rotary, just Rotary in general. And, yeah, we do community service projects. We do at least one international and one local per year. Our club does a lot more local ones. Like the one, one of them that we're doing right now is we're buying, sponsoring two kids for Tatum's Totes. So we just bought gifts for two foster care kids that we're going to send out sometime early December.
The dinner was excellent. You guys did such a good job.
Thank you, yeah, I was very happy.
It was very well attended, yeah.
Your chamber singers also did the North-South football game.
Yes. Yes, last weekend, we sang the National Anthem at the Vermont, North-South High School football game. It was our biggest crowd, I believe, this many times ever. Sound good?
Yeah, thank you so much. And you can leave.
And for repping the Stage 40 t-shirt?
Oh, yeah. All right, the next thing is the Timeth and update.
So, thank you all for being flexible and joining us inside this classroom. For me, it feels very much at home, since this used to be my classroom for about seven years, so this is easy. It's better than being in the community center for me. So, I am the principal, so I was the teacher for six and a half years. I started off as a pre-K para and then kind of moved my way around and up. So, this is my update. These pictures are here of our students voting on town on the election day, but they were voting for our student council members. So, it was a very fun experience. We use the actual voting booths and everything, so let's see if this works. There we go. So I'm going to share with you my goal and the school goal we have. So, my goal is to create an environment of open communication and transparency where my students, staff, and families can feel supported. So, I'm doing this by having an open door policy. People, community members stop by, I see them, staff come in and out, students come in and out. I have Monday staff email updates, usually it's actually Sunday night. Friday family updates, I connect regularly with the parents' club now. We're trying to rebuild that connection with them. That's like a PTO, but it's a little bit different for us up here. So, I'm talking with students daily and doing restorative practices with them, updating the student and family handbook and the creation of a staff handbook, so that we can all be on the same page. I have a shared drive for all staff, so that they know right where to go for important documents. The struggles, though, or challenges, we're like changing that role from teacher to principal in the same school. That dynamic can be a little difficult, but like in a positive way. It was just kind of like I had to set my boundaries and realign those and the staff all jumped right on board. They understood, they were like, okay, there's things that Jen is no longer going to tell us or hang out with us and do things with us like that. So it's like, there's this line. And then navigating what can and needs, the needs to be shared, so it's, it's a, it's a different position I'm in now. So, I have to not share everything and it's going to be on me and I have to, you know, I call Jody and we talk, or Brian, and that's my, my sharing. And so, and then not over-communicating. I'm a very like straight-to-the-point and no-fluff kind of person, so, but I know that there's other people out there that want more communication, but finding that line of, am I over-communicating to my families and staff or is it going well? So far, it appears that they love my email updates on the Fridays and on the Mondays. So, the staff knows who's in, who's out, where I am, who's coming into the building, stuff like that, so they're enjoying that part. Okay, school goal is to better align our behavior expectations throughout the school using the Behavior Matrix, Behavior Documentation Form, and a Common Language. So, previously, we were not tracking data as a whole. It might have been done inside the classrooms, like I have a student that's having some difficulties and we might be doing an informal tracking. But as a whole school, we were not tracking behaviors. So, this will kind of connect later, but it's kind of like that, what other schools were doing in the district, I felt like this is something we could kind of align with, but yet not lose our identity at Timeth. And the staff was totally on board. I feel it's important for the staff to be on board with it and not just me force something down their throats, kind of thing. So, we create a common language that allows everyone in the school to be on the same page, right down to the specials, teachers, and the subs. We've had conversations with them. And then we have Language of Behavior Matrix, which are similar to MRU, so that when our sixth graders head off to seventh grade, this isn't new to them, so that we're making those transitions easier. So, there's been challenges, of course. Initiating something that's completely new is, is difficult. So, ensuring that while we are using the tracking form, we're not just using it as like, you are not doing well, here you go, and that's it. It's a time for creating a restorative practice and discussion. So, all the students, if there is, and I'll show you the form like filled out, I'm usually filling it out with them most of the time. And it's really like tiny things of, you know, you are disrupting the class, like you've done it five times now, and now, please go see Ms. Kluja, because I've asked you five times and we're not getting there. So, we're going to have a discussion about this and then talk with the teacher after that. So, having that time and space to discuss and restore with students, so it's not just punitive. And they fill out the form with us, with me. They sit there, we talk about it, what do you want on it, what do you want to say? So then, not only does everyday staff need to be aware, also subs, specials, teachers need to be on the same page. So, making sure that they know how we're handling each behavior. And then keeping Timeth's identity while embracing, embracing district initiatives. It's Timeth, it's Timeth and everything, so we're that mountain school. Okay, hold on, let's see what happened here. I think we can go, just go to the next page. Let's do here. There we go. Okay, so this is what our tracking form looks like. So, it has minor behavior problems, so inappropriate language, physical contact, that's not like a, I punched you in the face, physical contact, this is like, I gave you an unwanted hug or I touched you and poked you, something along those lines. So disruption, property misuse, electronic violation. So then we have the majors. And then we also have the contributing factors. So I will talk with them, like, why were you doing this? Did you think it was funny? Were you trying to get attention from your peers because all attention was on you and you thought you'd keep going? So then, teacher, like the consequence is loss of privilege. I haven't really done that, I don't love to do that. Coming into my office and having this conversation is usually the best practice for them. So it's time in office, though, this didn't come on to here very often. So then conference with the student, usually, so it's time in my office and the conference. And then, if it needs to be, we have had parent contact. And parent contact is either I call them to give them a heads up, or I send this home and their parent just has to sign it. I've actually had one sent home for my own child. So, I'm like, when people get like, well, I said, well, my kid got one home. He had the disruptions. So, and we signed it. I did not fill it out. I have somebody else fill it out for my own child. He had enough of that for two years with me as his teacher. So, he, they sign it, they fill it out. Sometimes staff, if I happen to not be here, they'll fill it out, they'll talk with me and we'll see how we kind of restored that with the student, because I never want a student just having it, like, this is what happened and walking away. I want them to know that like, you just start right back over. It's not like this is adding up, it's a start back over from here. I'm going to use this and not do anything weird. And this is our school-wide expectation, so this is our Behavior Matrix. It's in the halls, it's in the bathroom, outside the bathrooms, it's in the lunchroom, it's in some classrooms, and we talk about it. So, it's similar to every school that is in our district. And, you know, there was a little pushback by putting this at our school, but I was like, we actually do all this. This is just us putting it on paper that we do it. We ask them to do all these things, we want them to use indoor voices, right? I mean, we don't want them screaming, we want them to raise their hands, we want them to say please and thank you, things like that. So, this has been nice to reflect to and look at with the students also. Those are our two new forms. And so then this gets me kind of to being hired as the principal. I knew that there were things that I need to understand better, and so one of them was PBIS. You've heard of this, and if not, it's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. There is this institute called the BEST Institute. And I went with Tabitha Davis, our 1-2 teacher, because I will put her out there and myself, we were like, no, we don't want this, but we wanted to know about it. So, we're like, okay, we actually loved it. We, we loved every bit of it. We had a lot of planning time. We realized that we actually do so much of PBIS in our school, we just didn't call it PBIS. And so, I was, when I was there, I decided to apply for the BEST grant. It's called the BEST Institute, it's just the grant that goes with it. And I finally officially received the, like, a week ago that you've got the funds, so now I want to talk about it to you, what I want to do with it. So, our district does not have a social-emotional curriculum. Like, pre-K has one, that, well, some of the pre-Ks, I'm not sure if all of them universally use Second Step. Our pre-K does here. And so, we were having students that were coming on to IEPs and in through, for ESTs and having behavior concerns, but we had no way to really help them, address them, no curriculum, besides like, let's have a talk and discuss everything. And that doesn't always work for students. So, through some research and talking with other districts, this is a curriculum called Changing Perspectives. It works to achieve systematic change, I'm not going to read all of that to you, but it is extremely comprehensive and has amazing books that go with it. That's what really caught my attention. So, other programs can be a little, like, kitschy and there's some puppets and things and I'm not a puppet human, so I just couldn't wrap my head around using a puppet to talk to sixth graders. But I could use a really cool novel that the students actually have read and connect it to what they're going through. So doing novel studies and them relating themselves to what's happening in the book. So, there was a list of over 1,000 books that connect to all of their curriculum. And, so, obviously, I, I, the funds are not going to cover all of those books. But what I was able to do is get a subscription to Changing Perspectives for every school, including the high school, and then being able to purchase two, like, guidebooks or, you know, novels for each section of learning. So, they're going to talk about, I'm going to just go to the next page. So, they have, the topics are covered, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And disabilities is one of them, I didn't add in. So, we, I will be able to purchase a book for, two books for each school, I did all my math right, though, okay. Two books for each school under each title, so that they can have that resource. But it's a web-based portal, too, and my special educator here, Heather Kent, had purchased the web-based portal because she wanted to see what this was about, because we had a need here. And she loves it. She showed me one of the assessments, which will be great to bring to like an educational support team meeting as a data point for behaviors. It integrates with Google Classrooms, our older grades use the Google Classrooms, there's a digital gradebook option, interactive, there's student activities, I actually did one of the student activities, it was very fun. As an adult, I enjoyed it. And then, so, there's way more than what I have here, but there's like 1,000, I want to say, books that have been, and they continually add these books, so we can continually add to our supply. So, and they said I budgeted for each school to be supplied with a few books for each topic. And then, they, there'll be two subscriptions per school to access this. And the subscriptions can be used, like, every teacher can use it, but I bought two, so that in case somebody lost a password or something, I just felt safe with two. So the special educator can have it, the principal can have it, or a behavior interventionist or whatnot can use it, and classrooms can use it. So, I was also talking to, during a staff meeting, about what was happening here. And our, Tracy Tinsley, our PE teacher, she's really interested in it, and so she's doing her, like, pep plan around social-emotional work in this curriculum, so she's going to try to integrate it into her lessons, too.
Jen, can I just add, so there's a little bit of a match required for the BEST grant?
Yes.
So we are using just the little bit we had left from that, that curriculum chunk that you guys added to our district budget for, for the Bookworms workbooks and the TCI. We had like just enough left in that to get the match to get this. So we won't need to ask for any more, but that's how we're getting that match.
Yes. Okay, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes!
So, just, so I understand what, what's happening here, if, the books are, they're novels?
There are, so, yes, there's novels that connect to the lessons.
Right, so the point is that this, a student would be, this would be a student who has some kind of an issue, would be a...
Yeah, or like, they're just like, let's take like a first grader that's struggling with making friends. So it would be a book on friendship, and you could read it to the whole class, and there's a lesson to it. You don't actually have to read one of the books, you can just do one of the lessons and not read a book, but that book gives it a little bit more extra.
But they're, they're novels, and then maybe in the older classes, would the student actually be given the book to read?
That's what we've been doing, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'd just like to say, that is fantastic, to be using a novel as an instructional tool, because novels are able to communicate subtle messages in ways that are a lot more effective than saying, you know, here are the Ten Commandments, you must be, you know, that kind of thing.
Right, yeah.
So, and it involves reading a book.
Yes, and we all love that, too.
Yeah, well, that's, that's great.
Yeah, and the, I mean, the novels really are superb, like, I don't know if any of you've heard of like the Click novels, they're something like that, and they have really flashy covers and the kids are really drawn to them. Like, the special educator had them on her desk and a student was like, can I read that? And we're like, maybe, we might need to see if we can use it, but yes.
What's it worth, huh?
If they want it, it's like, so they're showing interest in the books. And 1-2 has some, because we have a parent that has donated some of those books from this curriculum to us, so we're also getting them in the back door, kind of, and in the classroom that way, and the students have loved looking at them. Okay, and then I just ended with some pictures of everything going on. I took the sixth graders recently to the Ecology School in Saco, Maine, with a grant that the Ecology School provided us. This is our pre-grade class, this is at Merck Forest, Donuts on a String, that's my child, this is my sixth grade class, just like we had to move today. My sixth graders had to do math, I teach sixth grade math, we had to do it in the pre-K room one day, and then Halloween, and then that's my costume on Halloween, which was a really not right costume on a very hot Halloween. But, we survived, so, any other questions?
Just for people, because I was part of the hiring process and everything, but could you just explain to folks, like, how, being a principal in this school, like, what is your divide versus just being a principal at a school? Like, what else are you doing here that's different?
Yeah, um, I can, so...
Have you cooked yet?
I, oh!
Don't ask her about the fish sticks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was not thinking about that.
There was a fish stick fiasco and I dropped all the fish sticks like 30 minutes before lunch was about to start. And we got it done, though, okay? So, yes, I have cooked. But I teach, my day, I have like a morning of 8:00 to 9:00 where hopefully I can get some stuff done. But then at 9:00, I teach a fourth grade shared reading for 45 minutes. At 10:00, I pull in for a DI group, which is actually one student who is accelerated, so she's alone, so she's with me. We do vocab and comprehension, and then at, she goes until about 10:15. Then at 10:30 to 11:30, I pull my sixth grade math. And then I have like lunch duty or recess duty. I usually always serve lunch, because I absolutely love, I don't love making it. I love serving lunch, because we started a new serving line, and usually the students prior, like, all the trays were made up and it was chaos. So now I said, let's do a serving line, and Jesse was like, yes! So I get to talk to every single student every day, and I'm usually in charge of the fruit and doing all the dressings. These are just like fun little things I love. And then, and then from about 1:00 to 3:00, not 1:00, I pull about a 20 to 30-minute math intervention for a little, little one, and then the rest I'm principal thing, we call it that. So, that's my day.
Good question.
Thanks. Yes. Any other questions? I do love the fact that I get to still teach, like, that is very, it was really super important to me when I was, you know, I said, like, if this was just, you're just going to be a straight principal, I would have still found a way to be doing something like this, so, yeah.
I just have a comment, as a parent of this, the newsletters are very good.
Thank you.
Very good.
Oh, I did have one other question.
Yeah.
This is a specific, in your behavioral matrix, that one of the misbehaviors, I guess, was a quote, electronic violation?
Yes.
What's that?
So, well, you could ask my son, I guess. Today, it was something along like, he's supposed to be doing whatever, like a minor electronic violation is like, he's supposed to be on Prodigy, but he was watching a YouTube video or something, that's not what he was doing today, but let's just say that, that's a minor, like, the teacher comes over and it's like, oh, that's not Prodigy, like...
Right, gotcha.
You got it. But then, like, a major is like doing something like, somehow getting into, I haven't had a major yet, and that's where I'd probably be like, is this a major? But yes, like, misusing completely, like, getting into like background, what you're not supposed to be getting into, looking up something that's really inappropriate, something like that.
Mean message through chat.
Yes, mean messages through chat.
Sure, okay.
What about nice messages through chat during class?
That would be a minor.
That would be a minor.
Okay, but it's still, it's still not permitted.
Yeah, no, not really, because...
No, that answers my question. That's perfect, thank you.
I guess the other, the only other thing that I have is, anytime you're doing like new disciplinary things or anything, like, it's easy to be like, be excited about a new system, and, but like, how are you going to make, what's the efficacy of it? Like, how, what's the long-term trap versus the day-to-day thing? Like, how is that, do you have a plan for that?
Well, so like, what, I, this is why I switched my, so originally when I applied for the BEST grant, my switch, I was going for something else. And then when I started filling out these forms, I really realized that a lot of it was social-emotional. And so, that's kind of where my long-term is, is that hoping that this curriculum will limit the amount of this. It's really just like a respect thing in the classroom that we're kind of having, we're seeing the talking back, the constant talking, the, the not ownership of yourself and your, you know, quote-unquote, stealing learning from other students. And so, I'm feeling that this kind of curriculum can kind of guide some of that, so that's where the long-term is for that. And it's also really great to have for, like, an EST meeting or an IEP meeting, saying like, here you go, like, we do have this behavior being exhibited in our room, so.
Any questions, comments, anything? Awesome, you know, when you see our principals and they're sharing with you, I hope you're noticing this year, you're seeing very specific school goals, but you're also hearing, like you heard from Jen today, her own personal goal as a leader. I think it's pretty powerful to have a first-year administrator stand up and say, here's what I know I need to work on, and here's actually what I'm struggling with in doing that work. I think that's pretty powerful, and I think there's a, there's a really good reason why the committee selected Jen, because she has some of those qualities that are going to make her grow into a fantastic leader.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
The next thing is board education, general open Q and A. So last meeting, we talked about if we, if anybody had any questions that they wanted to bring to this one, just of general, like, board activities or governance, or just things we wanted to know. Did anyone have an idea of any, any questions about that? And obviously, it's okay if you don't, but...
I happen to miss the last meeting, but what Brian shared out a few days ago from the state ed...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
On the spending?
Yeah.
And how everything comes together, even though it was 30-something pages long, which is fantastic information. Takes a lot to digest, but it was good material.
Good, good feedback, and I think the interesting thing about that, I was talking with Stan the other day, and, you know, I think I hinted at this in my email, I said, I hope you notice some things in here that you've heard before. Because for a couple of years, Stan and I feel like we've been talking and been like saying things like, oh no, is it okay to say this? Because the, the official message was, we have a system, it's equitable, you know, Brigham decision, this is the way we do things, you know, for 20 years. So, we were, we were pretty surprised to see something official come out from the AOE that was pretty, pretty clear and direct and said, this is set up to be equitable, but in practice, it's not.
It's not.
You know, where we, we felt like we were crossing lines by saying things like that, you know, three years ago, when we talked budget, so, interesting to see that conversation growing, I think.
There's an also, I don't know if, I didn't send it out, but there's also a VT Digger article that came out maybe a day before that report came out, and it made me also, when I was reading that report, think about things, because what they were saying, and I, you know, it's one of those things, I don't know with, what point they were with the data when they came out with this, was that a lot of districts, or at least super tendents, when they were doing the, the, what did they call that tour, the listening tour?
The listening learn.
That, they ended up seeing a lot of data that wasn't super correct. And so I think that's the other part of what we're, when we're looking at the data that's coming out of the AOE. The other thing that they said that I was astonished to know is that there's no, the director... The other thing that they said that I was astonished to know is that there's no, um, the director of finance is in open position and the assistant of finance is in open position right now.
Director of special ed at the AOE is in open position too, right now. They hired somebody who was there maybe almost a year for special ed, but the finance lasted about six months.
Right, which is a very, when we're talking about like future changes and thinking about how, it's like, it seems like a very difficult job for the state level if they don't have, the person who I think would be like the main point person on creating a, you know, at least more information, more data about the stuff, so. I do appreciate that, that report and so I think that was great and the, you assume that there's going to be more of that, but I think we also have to recognize, be like, okay, what's the, see if other people are talking about that, the data points and stuff as well.
Is there any way that we, that we as a district could compare our spending to other districts' spending?
There used to be.
Ah, okay.
There used to be and when we would do our data report, we would always get, uh, data sheets from the state. And those data sheets would be, I think they were something along the lines of cost-effectiveness comparisons or something was what they were called. After, and I could be a little wrong about this, the timing I think is accurate, but I want to be careful about what caused it. The timing was around merger, so Act forty-six and that merger timing and, and that happening in a lot of places across the state. I don't know if it's because of that, but right around that time, uh, I'd go to Stan and say, hey, I want to finalize the report, do you have that yet? No. Two days later, Stan, I want to finalize my report, do you have that yet? No. Stan, I, uh, they said they're gonna have it in a few weeks. So we published a report, uh, probably four, five or six years ago that said, uh, had a big page that said pending cost-effective effectiveness report from the AOE. And we have never gotten one since. And that used to be the sheet that compared you to other, other districts, supervisory unions, entities that had a similar arrangement and similar, you know.
And I guess that's the thing, um, that bothers me to some extent is, is, you know, are there districts that are, that are increasing their budget thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent? And supposedly they are, I don't know who they are, but supposedly they are. And, and so when we present to our taxpayers a budget of whatever it may be.
Fiscal responsibility.
Yeah, and, and it, it would be nice, and I guess that's why the state doesn't do it, it, it would be nice if we could say, you know, this, this, because that's part of the issue in terms of increases, taxpayer increases, is it's not necessarily what we do here in the Mill River Union High School, Mill River Unified Union District. It's what they do in Chittenden County.
Everywhere.
Sorry. That, that makes it more difficult for us.
And that report really plainly said that.
Yeah.
Which I have not seen that very plainly stated anywhere except maybe newspaper quotes from various district personnel, you know? Not anybody official from the administration putting it that plainly, sorry, you were gonna.
No, no, I was just gonna lead on what, what Len was saying in the Vermont education funding that you shared. They hinted at that, but they didn't say it as black and white as
I'd like to see it.
As the report that you're saying. They're saying, don't forget that when every district puts their money in or their budget in, that the state is liable for funding that.
Yeah, yeah.
It does, they didn't outright say that, well, because this district's fiscally responsible and that one's not, you're liable for it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's interesting, because I think that report used, used the language of a disincentive, that districts have a disincentive to making painful cuts. Because if you make those painful cuts, but nobody else does, you don't really actually realize the tax savings. So across the state for twenty years-ish, for about twenty years across the state, districts have all struggled with this, do we make the cuts? Is it really gonna help us as much as we think it is? Uh, not really, so the, the argument is for many, many, many years, folks have been a little reluctant to cut.
Yeah.
Because there hasn't been a really good reason to cut. And here we are, you know, no wonder.
And I think the, the flip side of that is the conversa- and the reason why it's really hard is because like, you know, one of the other funding models is basically like, everybody gets a certain amount and then you as a town could vote for more spending, but that inherently says, okay, richer places get to have better schools.
Absolutely.
Right, and so it's like, that, you know, that part of the, you know, equi- equitability is like, oh, well, we'll just do it this way. And then, you know.
Well, that goes back to the whole gold town stuff and, and trying to make it equitable and. I, I can remember and, and I'll stop here, but the state came out and said, you have to keep your budget below this percentage increase. I, that was probably, I was at Fairhaven, so you're probably talking twenty years ago, right?
I think I know this story, keep going.
And, and so we busted our tail to keep it under the amount, because the, the, what the state was saying is if you don't, you're gonna be penalized.
That's what happened.
Nothing.
So the people that did the right thing.
Got nothing.
But the people who didn't were fined.
Got nothing.
Yeah.
It was the most incredible thing I've ever seen in my life. And, and it just showed, and, and I, I say this.
People have learned, you know.
It doesn't matter.
Why are we gonna try really hard to do this when our neighbors aren't?
And there's a, I still say this, I'm sorry. There's a big divide between north and south Vermont. I mean, Middlebury is the line, in, in my mind.
So if we bring it back, sorry if anybody else wants to talk.
Well, I just was gonna say, I feel like we, we shouldn't generalize maybe that much about it, cause then there's like Northeast Kingdom, which is like a whole, and that's nice.
The Northeast, it's amazing to me, the Northeast Kingdom funds education without any problems, I mean, they, they.
Also don't have a lot of high schools, there's like.
Maybe up until recently.
They tuition a lot of their kids at the high school level in the Northeast Kingdom. And they also have those private, whatever they're called, schools, public-private schools.
Yeah.
The independents.
Like St. John's or Academy.
Yeah, so they have like, this is the tuitionary and this is, so, you know, it used to be like Ira had a school board, no school. They had a budget, no school, you know, so it, so it is different, um, up there. I mean, they send, they tuition their kids, at least they used to, to New York State in the Grand Isle area, they would, the kids would go over to New York State.
Right, and, and New Hampshire.
Same enough, over on, uh, kids would go to Granville, right, on the coast there, so. It's a crazy system.
Board education, what do we do? And I think the, the best thing we can be doing is we can be informing ourselves, which we're doing, and I think we've done for a couple of years now, having those deep conversations about budget. And, and coming back to it every year, because gosh, I forget some of the details until I dive back in every year. Educating ourselves, doing some of that work in public so that we can be educating the public. Uh, Stephen, who's not here, but I want to shout out to him for incorporating those discussions and conversations into those newsletters
Newsletters, right.
That I know some of you have gotten on Front Porch Forum, too. I, I think another thing that you can, you can do is you can advocate to your local representatives. And I think the advocacy that I would, I would recommend is a far more general than like a position. You know, you're welcome to come up with your own personal positions and talk to your local representatives, but I wonder if something general like, we'd love a simple system, we'd love a transparent system, we'd love a stable system. You know, you can think about what that means to be simple, transparent and stable. But I think what we're starting to hear across the state is that folks are looking for those same things, you know? So if our representatives hear, hear that message, you know, I think we are in a, in a place this year that is far ahead of where we were last year, as far as folks heeding that message, cause they're hearing it from more people. The more they hear it, the better. Let's, let's try and get something over the, over the finish line. Otherwise, the board, you know, the board doesn't have a huge role there. We do our budget work, we can advocate with our local reps, you know, if things don't change as far as the funding formula or some of those incentives or disincentives, you know, we're gonna find ourselves next year in the same exact pattern, same exact conversations.
I think there's also like, the idea that, like, we talk about our budget and like, we kind of talk about it for the year, but like, we have a concentrated thing. And then if you think about like, if you are lobbying or talking to your representatives, you're like, well, now solve this problem in this very short window that you have.
Yeah.
And so it's like, for me, it seems very difficult, I think that's.
Start in January, when everybody has a finalized budget already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also just like, you know, the, the last act, I feel like there was, there were some holes in it because there wasn't enough time devoted to actually saying like, okay, let's game out what happens if we don't put caps on spending, like on, on saying, oh, like if you're, if we don't say it's a hurt district, you get to, you're buffered, but no, everybody else isn't, like that, that kind of thing. And so like, we also have to expect a certain amount of lacking from having a very part-time house, right? And so like, that's the choice, that's, so like, that's also an expectation that if we're.
That's a reality, it is.
And if we're, if you're talking to your representative, be like, what are you doing outside of that time to, to try to educate yourself or try to get something occurring?
Yeah, no, that's a really good point, Josh, because it, it is, I think, a Herculean task. Uh, you know, and I don't ever want it to sound like our representatives aren't trying. Um, I think given that limited time and how hard the task is, the more they can hear, you know, we can explore three hundred different options, but if we're hearing the same thing from a lot of people, that might narrow down the options. Might make it a more manageable task, but yeah, it is, it is a very, very hard task. I do not envy them that.
The other point of just while we're reading these reports and educating ourselves, one of the caveats that I always have in my mind is like, one, I don't really care what the bottom half of states do for their education spending, like they're, if they're not spending money and also not educating their children, I don't really care what their model is. And then the other caveat, when I'm reading these things is like, and I don't know what the ratio is, but like most places, except for maybe like some of the out in the plains, ruralness, there's all, like, our big city isn't as giant as all the other rural big ci- like, you know, rural states that have a big city, and so there's, that buffer is a lot different than our buffer. So when they're talking about per people spending and all that stuff, it's different.
You want to hear a fun one?
Yeah.
Uh, in, in that same vein, uh, we were reading this report and talking about it and we did a little bit of math. LA County Schools, um, like five hundred and sixty thousand students or something. Seven times the number of students in our state.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Seven board members on that LA County School Board. So you have how many hundreds of board members across the state of Vermont, how many, how many tens of boards? How many, you know, fifty-some superintendents? You go to LA County Schools, you got one superintendent, you got seven board members.
Yeah.
Well, that's the way it is in several, I mean, it's that way in South Carolina, I mean, it, it.
It's interesting, cause there are pros and cons, but I think it's, it, it becomes more challenging when you're trying to shift the system and you have so many moving parts and pieces versus a couple. And you, for sure, they have checks and balances in place in LA County to make sure that things work and are, are ethical. It's not just, you know, nobody watching the till because you have so few people. Their structures are just, uh, more organized. What an interesting thing, too, that they pay their school board members.
It's a job.
A, a pretty, pretty good salary. It's a full-time job. So you think about like our, our state house folks, our representatives there, you know, that's not a full-time job. They're not paid, you know, your jobs are not full-time jobs, they're not nearly compensated like one. But sometimes the work needs that, you know?
Well, the other, I mean, the other aspect that they have to consider is that we depend on property tax. And, and, you know, like Tinmyth, even though, you know, maybe Josh's property went up a lot, he's not gonna, it's, you know, what unrealized gains, you know, and, but yet, he's, they're ending up having to pay because of that CLA a lot more, they're, the value of the property hasn't gone up, so the whole property tax, CLA, that's another aspect. That's what I think really throws it out of.
I think that makes it unstable, so I think, you know.
For sure.
Thinking about exploring, how do we shift from two-thirds of it comes from property tax and one-third comes from other revenues?
Yeah.
Maybe it needs to be one-third property tax and two-thirds other revenues.
Or there has to be a more, there has to be a more stable way of, of using property taxes that doesn't affect, um, you know, supposed values that don't, you know, that people don't really realize, so, you know, our budget goes up three percent, but our property or, yeah, those property taxes go up seven, eight, nine percent and it's.
And your, and your property isn't worth anything unless you sell it.
Until you sell it, that's right.
You know, I, I mean, my house and my property are bringing me in no income.
That's right.
You know, I mean.
Well, the historic thing was like, it used to be your property, not just the place that you lived.
Right.
It used to be like your cart, your, like, everything that you owned used to count as it.
Yeah.
Like, you know, way, 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 way.
And realistically, it's only worth what someone's willing to pay for.
Absolutely.
Right.
Whether it's a nickel or a million dollars.
And to be fair, like, I, like, if you own a large chunk of, if you own more than twenty-five acres, you can easily be subsidized as well, so not only maybe are you lower income, but then once you're over twenty-five acres, you get to go into working land and then, you know, you get to have a tax break for that. So like, one of the reasons why our landscape looks the way we do is, is because we incentivize, you know, farming and logging through this tax break, right?
Yeah.
So it's like, that's also a.
Good, bad or neutral, there's an interesting reason why we see that.
Right.
But I think one of the things that like, I feel like it was in the, uh, one of the VSBA videos that really, I think, um, kind of I had to reflect on was like, we always have this conversation about budget and like, how do we talk to people about the budget? And how do we really inform the people about the budget? And their takeaway was actually not how do you inform the voters, how do you put trust in the voters that you understand how the tax system works? Because as school board members, they should be picking us because they don't want to think about that, right? And so it's like, for our purposes, and like Brian's saying of like us going back and looking at it, obviously, people are gonna ask questions and you want to be able to explain it to them and hopefully they can understand it further, but like, it's as our job as school board members to understand, just so that we can articulate and then do the best that we can with the budget that understanding the changes of our budget, how that actually affects things.
You know, and I think that's a good point, too, and I think part of, part of having these discussions publicly, people see your engagement, which is, I think, really important in building that trust, cause people go, wow, I really do try to sort through this budget stuff. They don't just pick a number and run with it, you know, um, I think that's important.
And there are things, like, the, one of, like, to lend to your point of like this per-spending and stuff, like, it's really tricky, like, one of the, I feel like maybe the first year I was on the board, I, I went and tried to find something like that. And like, one of the things was like, okay, what's the tax rate? Like, are, are we changed, like, where are we in the spectrum of, of that? And it was like, okay, we're in the middle, basically. Like, we're not at the top, we're not at the bottom, like, depending on the year and certainly, you know, CLA and stuff like that, but it's like, on average, and it's been this way for a very long time, that it was like, we are middle.
Yeah.
And so, and I don't know, you know, and it's, when you look at the census, trying to figure out like, where are we economically comparatively, we're like, we're not at the bottom, we're not at the top, we're a little bit lower than the middle, but it's like, so it's like, our budget relatively reflects what our community is. And then there's the greater whole, which, you know, you have to figure that out as a society, which is not really our jobs, it's our jobs is trying to do the best we can, right?
In this district.
In this district, yeah, and try to actually say, okay, the spending that we're doing, is it actually being effective? And then the other thing, sorry, I'm talking a lot, I haven't been in-person at a meeting.
It's exciting.
Is, I don't know if anyone else saw this, but, um, you know, I think it was Pew or somebody just came out with a research that said basically fifty-three percent of the population has a sixth-grade reading level, twenty-one percent are fundamentally illiterate. They're just barely getting by. And so I think that's another big caveat when we hear out, you know, people saying, you know, we want better outcomes, we want better outcomes, it's like, as a school and a district, you can only do so much and there's a ton of hours that the kids spend at here, but there's a lot of hours that aren't accounted for and it's really hard if in the household they're not seeing, you know, reading, then it's like, you can only do so much. And we know through all these, when we look at all these test results and stuff, it's, if you. And we know through all these, when we look at all these test results and stuff, it's, if you can't read, then it's like, really, really tough.
Dead in the water.
Yeah. So when we look at our numbers, I always want them to be better.
Yeah.
But when we say, well, there's a huge chunk of the population that's only reading at a sixth grade level, how are we, you know, we all, we have to think about that in the back of our minds as well.
And, and you're getting at that interesting question of, is it a cost or an investment? And at, it's the same thing. You're putting money out, but it's a different mentality if it's a cost versus an investment. I hear you describing it's an investment because gosh, we need to have a society that can read. That's, that's important to, you know, where we are and what we want from where we are.
It's a challenge though. I did get, when I was running for school board, I got an email from a resident of Waller saying, are you one of those people that thinks, I'm paraphrasing, but that education is improved by throwing more money at it? And it was kind of a hostile question.
So, well, you know, and I think that gets at the trust question too. Because if, 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 if we're asking for funding and people don't trust that we're actually doing good work with it, they're gonna say no. If we're asking for funding and they do trust we're gonna do work, good work with it, they're gonna say yes. And it's a really interesting thing that I think we've seen even in our region, where when people do things that are large enough breaches of trust that it maybe hits the newspaper, you see their budgets shift and how people approach their budgets shift. And people start saying things like, why should we give you anything? Because you're, you know, you're wasting what we give you, so we're not gonna give you any more, you know? I don't know. That's a really, really interesting thing.
And I think like, part of it too is like, okay, so we, we asked in finance to be like, uh, we heard a request for math interventionists that cost money, but potentially can affect a lot of kids. And, you know, down the road, help, you know, you know, for the people that are not necessarily parents in the district, one, it's super abstract for them. They're not even, they might even not even see test scores or anything. They just have a general feeling of it. But, um, and even the parents that are in, if, if we can say, we're spending this money on things that make sense based on what parents are asking for, what our students need, then I think that's, you can justify that. You know, and the reality is, is like, as a school board, we have such a tiny actual influence compared to like, what the big picture is for outcomes of students in general and what we can, what, you know, people's property taxes are gonna be really. Cause like, we could cut a whole bunch. And-
I don't think it would change property taxes much.
It would go, for that year, it would be really great. For that one year. And that's the other caveat about like, bringing schools together and I don't know what-
Consolidation is, is hard to do on a small scale and have long-term savings. I think you have to do it on a very large scale to have long-term savings.
But even then, when you're still, when you still like, because basically the savings are, we get to fire you, right? We don't have tons of superintendents, we have way less principals. And so that first year, you save a ton of money. But then what happens in seven years when health insurance is 13 every year and you're back to where you were? And so then it's like, then you're like, okay, well, consolidate some more. But that is the, that's one of the things that I always say is like, all of these savings generally, cause it's, you're not getting that much better a deal on computers. You're not getting that much better, because we're still, like you said, our whole state has less students than in LA County or in a lot of other counties.
A seventh of the number of students.
Yeah. I had, um, tried to get some information on how much money, um, of the total budget goes to private schools, you know, school, uh, not school choice, because whatever it's called, I don't know. But it's where, you know, uh, schools don't have a designated high school and so they send their kids to, um, and you know you can't get that number? You can call the, it's not there. That number's not there.
Wouldn't that be good to know?
And how many kids that is. And, and, you know, so when you talk about, you know, trying to increase enrollment because that reduces your per pupil cost significantly, well, there's a lot of money going to, you know, fancy schools, not even in the state of Vermont. So, um, and that, so, I mean, that comes up, but there's a very strong independent school, private school, um, lobby at, at the state level that prevents that discussion from even happening. So-
Right. Cause there was, cause they, cause they tried to talk about it during the last session or the session before because of the Supreme Court ruling, where they didn't want to, they didn't want us to have-
Funding of religious schools.
-funding to religious schools. But then they were like, you just gotta close everything off and, you know, if you're in Manchester and you're, or, you know, like that, when we merged, like, Tinmouth residents, you know, they don't get to go to Long Trail anymore.
Right.
You know? And that was the, when I got elected, that was the, like, I got like, very few comments from people and they were like, is there any way that we could bring that back?
Other non-budget things folks want to think about as far as board education goes? I mean, that, great conversation. It's timely, but just making space for if there were other things folks want to think about. I do think community engagement has been having some really healthy conversations around board's role with engaging with people. So I think that work is being done too, to sort through some board education there. Other things that folks are scratching their heads going, what should we be doing? What should we be thinking about? How should we be approaching this? Everybody good?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Good conversation.
Yeah. And the reality is, is like, it's hard to have a conversation about it anywhere, like, you know, I really appreciate all of this, even though I did a lot of the talking.
Not all of it.
So the next thing, do, do we want to do, the next thing is board goal review? Did we want to spend some time on that? Or do we feel like our brains are good for talking about board overarching things?
I, I think it couldn't hurt just to look at it.
Fantastic.
Give it two minutes if nothing at all.
Excellent.
Okay.
I don't recall with the la- cause one of the things that we were doing is kind of just when we were talking about them, we were gonna just highlight like, a specific one that we felt was more relevant. I don't particularly remember which one we had done last, but- Does anyone have, anyone that's, any of the board goals that stand out that you'd like to kind of talk about? I can tell for our sake, we're about, you know, we're gonna talk about in finance, we're about to go into a new negotiations with the support staff. So that would be, you know, that's the, under number two, um, trying to come into the negotiations with, you know, doing art. For me, it's like, our goal is to come into that prepared and ready to, to communicate with the members of whichever union we're gonna organize with so that we can try to be efficient, I think. Cause I think that's one of the trickiest things with these negotiations is like, it's the same thing as this budget. It's like, you're always trying to chase this goal of like, okay, let's get this down so that, all right, we can figure it out into the budget for next year, um, without having too much. I think this year we are gonna not be, we're not gonna have a finish before this budget.
No, unlikely, unlikely.
They go, cause this one goes down, wouldn't this, they're up at the end of this year, right? And so next year will be the new.
So we would have to have that negotiated by early January.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
I, the only comment I have, um, well, two, I guess. One of the things that kind of bugs me is when we talk about stakeholder engagement. That's, that's so foggy to me. And I don't know how we make it more specific. But that's what, you know, like, under number two, open communication that creates strong feedback loops to inform board work. What does that mean? What does that mean?
Well, so in my, so, you know, I think one of the things that we would say is part of that is like, what we heard Jen do today, right? So I think that's like the most concrete example where we have an expectation as a board that we'll be present, we'll, you know, tell Brian that we would like to hear something about this.
Yeah.
So, like, one of the, you know, into my mind, like, one of the reasons asking Jen about like, well, what's your breakdown of your day as a principal versus a teacher, is like, okay, we have these small schools. Part of the, so we got that, um, the, the information from the AOE and part of their, one of the blurbs was like, there's tons of school districts that are cheating small schools like they're giant schools. And like, they're just having a full-time principal when it doesn't make that much sense.
Right.
So part for me is like, okay, we get that information from Brian, I read that. And then I say, okay, how is that example in our small, in our school work out? So then I can ask Jen this question, be like, okay, actually, how is your breakdown different-
Right.
-than it would be if you were at a different school?
Yeah.
So in my mind, that's like, that would be the feedback loop. Are there more abstract cases of that? Probably. But for me, that's like, what that one-
No, and, and I agree.
That makes sense.
The only other thing I'll say is, uh, under number two, D, recognition and appreciation. I, I don't think we as a board do enough recognition of, of the folks. What was it, a couple of years ago, with Teacher Appreciation Week, when we all got a handful or bigger than a handful of postcards that, that we personally filled out that went to the teachers? I think that's the kind of thing we need to do also.
Right. And that is one of those responsive, for, for, and like that, I feel like that's one of those, like, cause it was, this year we missed. So like, last Teacher Appreciation Week, we missed. And it was just, and I, you know, it was because we had a certain board member leave and no one like-
Picked up on it.
-picked up on it. And it was like, one of those things where it was like, the week before, and it was like, oh no, this is, it's too late. So for one of the, like, and it's true for any institution, is like historical knowledge. So like, there's some stuff that you just do because you've done it, you've done it, you've done it.
Right.
But if there's enough people leave-
It's ingrained in that person's soul that every Tuesday I get up and I do this.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, Tuesday come and-
Yeah, right. And so it's-
And that's, and I understand that. I, you know, I, I think your, your take on historical knowledge is important. I mean, I've said that many times. And, and so I, I don't know if we get around that by putting it, putting in more specifics.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think, so for in this case, so I think now, we say, Brian, your yearly chart, for this specific case of like, Teacher Appreciation-
Right.
That, two, two or three meetings before Teacher Appreciation Week, we need to start having that conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then once it's in that document, it's a lot harder for us to slip. So if there's other things like, you know, then, you know, we say the new teachers thing, that is a conversation point that we need to have brought up into things. So, and if there's other points in time-
How about end of January? Then you've got February to do it, cause it's first, second week of May. Okay.
What is that, the Teacher Appreciation? Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll put an item on our calendar for Teacher Appreciation Planning. Cool. Absolutely.
And then the other, I, you know, for that appreciation point, I think the other thing that we could ask Brian to do is like, if there is something that occurs, like, if a teacher does win an award or does some, like, something interesting happens, we put it on him to say, just make a note of it so that we can talk about it at, at, at the meeting.
And I think, and I think, uh, to do that both ways. Cause Lynn had a great suggestion the other day about the sign at Mill River, hey, shouldn't we do something there? I go, oh, great, let me get a card, we'll make it happen. You know, so if you send things my way, great, um, and I'll bring things to the board.
Well, just even like tonight, Jen getting that grant, that would be something that it would be nice to, I mean, we recognized her, but, you know, she had to recognize herself essentially.
Yeah.
I, I like the pieces that, sorry, I still read the newspaper. But the, the parts in the Herald, I, I think-
Yeah, the community knows.
That's important, yeah.
I think that's what it is or something.
I, I like that, that, that you're doing that and I appreciate that. Because I, I, a lot of us old folks still read newspapers, sorry.
Online.
I do it online.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people do. We get the paper at Mill River, so you got kids reading it potentially too.
Yeah.
Brian, just like a quick thing, I think you, I don't think our board goals are updated on the website.
They should be.
Mine are coming up 23, 24.
Oh yeah, it does. I did, it does say 23, 24.
Cause mine, when I go and I link it, it says 24, 25. Oh, I'm going a different place. I got it, I'll fix that.
Okay.
Go all the way to the bottom in that link.
Okay, that link works better.
There was a second one there. I'll talk to BJ, we'll get that fixed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for finding that.
See, and this is a good example of why we should look at these board goals. Because like, we wouldn't have had the conversation about Teachers Appreciation Week and then what happens.
It would have been Teacher Appreciation.
Yeah. And so, that's one of the reasons why it's good to go back and look at these.
Yep.
I agree.
No, I think the board's gotten in a really good practice of that.
Um, does anyone have anything else that jumps out at you or any other comments?
I, I think just like Lynn was stating, and again, it's hard, and we've brought this up numerous times, is community conversations, public feedback, stakeholder feedback. You can only ask or solicit or inquire so many times. Sometimes you get a lot, sometimes you get a little, sometimes you get none, but however, we do that to the best of our ability.
Well, that was sort of the topic of our, uh, community engagement meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I caught the second half.
Yeah, that was pretty much it.
Cause I think, uh, as not a member of the community engagement and not having to have that responsibility directly, I think just like fatigue wears peo- wears on people. And like, if you try, keep trying things and, and you only get a little bit of response, it's hard to keep going, I would imagine. And so it's like, but you still have to give that opportunity, you still have to, because it might be important to that. Even if you only get one person's feedback like that, to recognize that feedback is important.
I like to use the analogy of, like, if Coach came to me in basketball season and said, by the end of basketball season, you're gonna dunk. Well, don't tell me I'm gonna dunk. I'm never gonna dunk, so give me a lower goal.
You get some moon shoes?
Absolutely. You don't want to demoralize people by selling the bar too.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think also, just in terms of this community engagement, but what we have to make sure is that the door is wide open and people know that the door is wide open. You can't force people to come. They'll come if they have something to say. But we want to make sure that they know how and where and that it's, it's available.
And it's a double-edged sword because a lot of times if you get a lot of people coming, it's cause there's a real angst.
But you want to know about it.
Absolutely.
Right, so-
And, you know, so it's kind of, the fact that people don't show up kind of says, okay, well, maybe, you know, they're feeling okay about things.
I think it probably does.
So, yeah, so we did talk about food, food and cookies.
Bribery.
Motivation.
That never hurts.
Motivation.
You know, sometimes I think it's a sign that people have, there are enough channels that people are aware of that they're getting what they need. You know, if, if everything has to come to the, to a board meeting to get addressed, then gosh, we only have one really good place for people to come and get results. You know, I think our, our principles, you know, you heard from Jen today, we've got folks who have their doors open and are listening and when people have questions, uh, you know, so if people are getting served there, maybe they're getting served by me or Jody or Coral or BJ, you know, uh, they're maybe finding what they need before they get here.
Well, also, I, I do think, um, when you do, you know, hear about people being upset about something, generally it's due to the fact that they feel like they weren't informed and a change was made without it really being discussed. So sometimes, you know, you gotta beat the drum a lot, when, especially if you're considering something-
You're gonna change something.
That you're gonna change something that, you gotta put it in newsletters, you gotta put it in the paper, you gotta, you know, talk about it out in the community or however, um, and it's gonna be less stressful for people. you know, talk about it out in the community or however, and it's going to be less stressful for people then just to hear it or read in the newspaper and go, what the hell?
I think being proactive pays huge dividends.
Proactive communications, yeah.
And, you know, something I told one of our principals today, I said, if you've got somebody who is calling you up once a week and they were always upset about something, the one time that you make it a week and you don't hear from them, call them.
Right.
Because if you keep that line of communication open, then they're going to tell you what's on their mind and it's not going to be a crisis, they're not going to be blowing up. Because you've shown them that, you know, so I think that proactive piece is really important.
And then, and I, and the big, I think the big asterix of all of this is like, our community engagement is the vote. It's the vote for us.
That is true.
And it's the vote for the budget. And like, it's not a conversation in, in like the straightforward sense, but it is a conversation saying, well, we don't want you to be on. You don't want me on the board anymore. That's saying, I, I only have so much energy.
It communicates.
And so it's like, you know, and so that'll, that's part of the conversation and you'd just like to have that be an intelligent conversation. Great. So I think now we can go on to non-union salary ranges and salary negotiations.
This was something that Kim had asked about, can we, can we have some resources and information there and some time to sort through how that works? So that's that number 10 material that I gave you. I think I sent it to you pretty, pretty soon thereafter, but we put it in the materials again so you could have that. Linked some documents in there too, so that you could get a sense of how we handle these five distinct groups of people, basically. Did folks have questions, comments, things they wanted to talk through with that?
Are you saying you sent us something about?
I did, but it's in the materials, number 10, staff categories and compensation process.
I wonder if like the thank you note idea or the staff appreciation notes, maybe something in that sort of calendar thing of, oops, let's remember or whatever, because it seems like the issue was, you know, with compensation of people at our meeting last time, it kind of got forgotten or whatever happened there.
Oh, that.
Something is, wait, just remind us to bring it up because we don't have formal negotiations with those people.
Was it attached?
Yeah, I hear that, I hear that.
And I just, I recognize like the hesitation or just like you're like, whoa, this is a big thing. And I, I'm not necessarily, I'm not suggesting like anything that's going to happen anytime soon. This would be like a very like long.
I do not download.
Process that makes sense in, if anything, like if we were to kind of start to look at this and try to think through, like, how do we create this in a way that is feeling like it's not, you know, when we talked about it last time, I just felt like it was like a lot of different systems over the years that had kind of placed people in haphazardly now.
Yeah, and I think some of that is, those are, those are things that have been done in the past and who knows how long they were done one way and then how long they were done another way.
Yeah.
Um, my commitment to you, and I, I think, I, I heard, I heard a really great request for information. So I didn't hear like, hey, we need to change this tomorrow. I heard, hey, let's look at what we've got. And I think to, to Stan's credit and the business office and some other folks being involved, I think the last several years, we've, we've tried to do the best we can with what we have. And I think the challenge is, you know, to go back and fix would be very hard. But our commitment is to keep things moving in a way that we don't ever get back there. You know, there, there may be places where work could be done to make things better, but we're never going to go down the road of widening the gap. So if the board wants to sit down and try and do that work of closing the gap, great. Our commitment is to never let it get wider. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, so Brian, I mean, you and I had a conversation
Yeah.
about why you can't just use a placement chart. And I don't know if people know this, but for several years, there were pay freezes for the teachers and they froze them at their step. The way they did it is they froze them at their step, which step used to equate to years of experience. But if a teacher was on her, their sixth year, sixth step, that year they stayed on their sixth step. And so over, over the years, they did that several times, as I recall. Lenny, you might even remember them doing that where they froze a step.
Teachers haven't got a step in years, yeah.
So now you have teachers who are on step, let's say 20, and, but they actually have 23, 24 years' experience. So when you bring in, or 30, and you bring in someone who's at, you can't put them on the same step because it doesn't equate to years of experience. So I talked to Brian about that. And to really make it all work, you'd have to bring a lot of teachers up in salary and other, I mean, it's just, it, it, I don't think, that was definitely unintended consequences when that was done. It really wasn't the, probably the most efficient way.
And I think, Carol, do you remember the price tag that I told you?
I couldn't find.
If we were to try to do that?
Yeah, it was a lot.
Yeah, it, it's, it would be really hard to accomplish.
Yeah, I was going to say millions.
It would be hard in one budget cycle to accomplish it.
Yeah.
But that would be the, that would be the sort of thing that you could sit down and you could look at, how do we do that over the span of maybe a three-year contract? That we negotiate? But I think to put that in context, I think the other thing I did to, to share with you, Carol, was that the number 15 is, is jumping into my head, that it would be, it would be something along the lines of like a 15% increase to try and do that work. So to do that and work in one year, that's a big increase.
And is that something that like time will fix? Like, it's just going to keep happening?
It won't get worse.
Right.
Yeah. But it won't get better.
Yeah, it won't get better.
Well, I mean, if, if the teachers that are still here that were part of that freeze, I'm thinking Joan must remember that too. Part of that freeze, I mean, eventually, I'm assuming.
Everybody here is part of that freeze.
Everybody, so.
None of our new teachers that we hired last year got a step movement. None of the teachers from two years ago, three years, four years got a step movement.
The cycle continues.
We have walked away from step movements.
Right.
They just aren't a thing anymore.
Right. And so when we negotiate the contract, it's just saying like, this is an amount of money that you get. And then when a new teacher comes is when that problem occurs.
Yeah.
Placing that new teacher is the issue?
Right.
If I understand it correctly?
Placing the new teacher is really, really hard.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And I think there are some interesting things where, where moving away from steps was of benefit to folks who had run out of steps. So you can have a really good conversation around honoring our teachers who have, who have been here for a long time and have done the work for a long time. And if those teachers hit the top of the schedule, there was no more step for them. So I think something that folks had a really solid rationale for, how do we still honor these folks who have, who have worked so hard for us? You know, we want to do that, right? Well, what we did, I think you said it perfectly, it was unintended consequences. Let's do this good thing to support these people who have worked hard for us. Oh, five years down the road, we realize the unintended consequences of that. And that's the challenge of placing people now and it being more confusing than it should be.
And appearing random, but I know it's not, but it does appear random to the, you know, someone who's not involved in it.
And then the, the other question that I had when I was looking at that is the, um, what is the difference between a union support staff and a non-union? So how do I become a non-union and how do I become a union?
So the, the support staff contract is going to, near the beginning of it, it's going to outline who that collective bargaining agreement applies to. And there are some categories that they don't apply to and, and that has a lot to do with conflict of interest and confidentiality, for example. So if we are doing negotiating work, Rebecca, for an example, is non-union because Rebecca could be sorting through records of teachers and compensation and, and she may be preparing documents for the superintendent's office that would put us in a, at a disadvantage if she were part of the union. So it's really those folks who are centered around the superintendent's office and the business office. Because of the information that they have to deal with for their job, it puts, it creates that conflict. So those are the non-union ones. Typically, if we have a position pop up, like Katja and Joan I'll meet with and say like, hey, I'm reading this. I don't think this person fits. This is the person. What do you think? So we'll have those conversations. We talked about IT most recently, I think, when we moved from contracted services in IT to having in-house people. We definitely sat down, looked at the language, decided, do they fit, do they not? So.
And what did you decide?
Uh, we decided they don't. They're non-union. So bus drivers are non-union. Business office and then superintendent's office, those are your non-union folks. It's a pretty small group of people. Good question, really good question.
Um, does anybody else have anything else they wanted to add to this? Nope. All right, then we'll keep going on to wrestling account transfer.
Uh, so we had, we had done this with Friends of Football two or three years ago, I don't even remember now. Maybe two years ago. Friends of Football created a nonprofit organization. They do fundraising and there's this interesting thing where they would do fundraising and they would have to have some way of accounting for that money so that they just don't carry a lot of cash around with them. So they would come to us and say, can you create an account for us? We'd come to the board, we ask for permission to create an account, we'd create an account, we'd put the money in. And now we have to do bookkeeping and record keeping for these accounts. And it adds a layer of complexity to doing that work that doesn't necessarily need to be there. And some folks have gotten to the point where they say, well, you know what, if we had our own account, it would just be easier. We need to go buy this thing. We don't have to go get three quotes and do this and do that and work with your business office. If it's our account, we can do, we can do it a lot more easily. Uh, so we're comfortable with that arrangement. Wrestling has done their work, the Friends of Wrestling Group, to create their nonprofit. What we ask of them is send us a W-2. That way we'll know you're done. You have everything you need in order for us to release funds to you. So when they have the W-2, we have all the tax information to be able to release funds to them. So we are asking the board to authorize, approve the release of $1,300 to the Friends of Football nonprofit.
Wrestling.
Wrestling, right?
I'm sorry, I said football.
Yeah, that's okay.
Wrestling, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make that.
All right.
Motion to do that.
All right, do we have a second?
Sure.
Len, great discussion. Um, I think, I probably asked this the first time we did this, but is there, by going to their own individual thing, are there any checks or balances that you're going to lose that would harm people that are wrestling or any of that kind of stuff? Like?
Yes, because they are probably not audited. So they are their own organization and they will need to come up with their own internal checks and balances. So we can't necessarily guarantee that what they do is on par with what we do. You know, the hope would be that absolutely they do. They have an organization and a structure and a treasurer and a, you know, a chairperson, president. So they have those roles. So we're confident that they will do that, but I can't guarantee to you because we don't have oversight.
And it's not taxpayer money, it's.
It's the, no, this is not local funding, this is not grant funding.
Right, this is just fundraising.
Yeah.
So it's their own gig, basically. They have their organization, they raise the money, they get to do what they want with it.
It's like a booster club, right?
Yeah, yes. And I doubt the president of the booster club is, is using the money inappropriately because they have enough people paying attention. But I do want to be clear, we don't technically have any oversight.
It's not our problem.
Yeah.
And that was going to be my only clarifying question, is that they do have a group that is president and treasurer.
Their officers.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, it was a treasurer I was working with specifically to get the W-2, so.
Excellent. Any more discussion? We're all good?
And, sorry, I'll throw one more thing in. Highly likely they have to do a tax filing. So there are going to be some pieces of the tax filing that are going to call for some of those things too, so. Okay, sorry, Josh.
Uh, all those in favor? It's everybody.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, the next thing is community, uh, committee reports. So personnel.
Hi. We didn't have a personnel committee meeting, but I know there was one contract, which I can't seem to find. And I can't find it. Brian, do you have it there?
Yeah, yeah, I got it. David Waterhouse, para educator. So this would be starting November 18th. 1.0 FTE, educational support staff located at Shrewsbury.
So I will make a motion that we offer a contract to David Waterhouse as educational support staff, 1.0 full-time equivalency. Thanks, Rebecca.
All those in favor, discussion, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Can I throw a discussion in real quick after?
Yeah, I just look in your direction.
We're thrilled to have David back. He used to work with us, yep, yep, yep. When I was a teacher, he was at Mill River. So we're excited to have him come back.
And he started, it looks like?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Next, and, and again, we're presented with coaches' contracts. And we haven't had an opportunity to look at them through the Personnel Committee. But in the past, what we've done, we've sort of gone with Kim's recommendations for coaching positions. And, and again, just a reminder, there is a system in place that places coaches on a salary schedule, if you will, based on their years of experience and the, what level they're coaching at. Obviously, varsity versus middle school versus JV. So, um, rather than going through each of them individually, I would like to make a motion that we accept the athletic winter coaches, middle and high school coaches as presented by Kim.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I, the one thing I'll say, it's just nice to see the same folks coming back. I mean, it's amazing. And it also is kind of amazing how many of them were Mill River students. I mean, it's, it's neat to see that and that they're willing to serve their community and serve our kids.
I was going to point that out, it's a common theme on the next couple too.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all I have for discussion.
All those in favor? Everybody?
Can I throw one at you, Len?
Sure.
Um, Kim gave us some last minutes. She has a volunteer cheerleader, uh, sorry, someone working with cheerleading. They are a volunteer, so that would be the $1 salary. This is Michaela Woodbury. You have a blank on that sheet. So she had, she has found somebody since we even sent those materials out. Would folks be willing to approve that separately?
I make that a motion.
Great.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, great, thanks. I'll do one more on the next set.
Now, where did that one fit, Brian? I'm sorry.
That was volunteer for cheerleading on the middle school, high school sheet.
I don't think there was a blank for that.
Oh, there wasn't a blank?
There wasn't a blank, no.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
So she added.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have, um, I'll make a motion to accept Marley Rosario as varsity softball coach. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second, but I don't think, I'll second it.
Okay.
But look at the number. The number is a little weird. It's supposed to be 2,800 because it's two comma. I mean, unless I'm reading it wrong.
$2,800,000?
Yeah, I was like, 28,000, wait. Just an extra zero.
Really, really good.
I, I'm thinking I'm coaching.
I know, you're just trying to see if we're really looking.
I think I'm coaching softball.
280 is probably.
Or 28?
2,800.
Uh, first year experience, I would say 280.
$280, but that doesn't seem equivalent.
But it's one year of experience.
Well, we've got fifth and sixth. Well, we've got fifth and sixth girls' basketball, for example, is 400. Elementary cheerleading, 200.
I know, but that's a varsity.
Do you want me to, why don't I bring it back to you?
Well, I was just gonna look at the winter coaches, and you have a one-year...
I was also just curious why the softball coach now?
Oh...
Did I miss that? No?
No, I'm sorry, I take it back. I'm looking at the elementary ones and the numbers are pretty different.
Yeah, no, the high school's all around, 20...
So yeah, no, 2,800 actually does make a little more sense.
Yeah.
I, I can get a number from Kim and bring it back to you.
Pending.
Are you rescinding?
Yes, who seconded it?
I did. I will take back my second. Is that what I do?
I take back my motion.
Yeah, you shall rescind it.
I shall rescind my second.
And I think, this being softball, we've got plenty of time. We'll bring out the...
Yeah, it's just, it's obviously clerical, I think.
No, we did not catch that, sorry.
I don't know if it's 2080 or...
No pun intended.
Oh, oh.
Didn't catch it.
Hit or miss, you know.
Okay, one more. Moving right along. This is from Mackenzie Belondo, the athletic director for the elementary and middle, elementary schools. And so I would make a motion that we accept her proposals for elementary winter coaches.
I will second that.
Great. Discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, blank was on this one. And if, if the board is willing to entertain third and fourth girls' basketball, Shawna Parker, who I believe is returning, or had coached for us in the past, $400, Shawna Parker, third and fourth girls' basketball.
I'll make that a motion. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Everybody.
And so I think personnel is done.
Do you have a next meeting?
Yes, December 4th at 6:30.
Okay.
At Mill River.
Yep.
Policy is next?
Policy. I bring to the group D6, which is substitute teachers. It is equivalent to the VSPA, an updated number to our new numbering sequence for a perjury. And I would make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Good. All those in favor? Everybody. Okay, we'll get that on the Herald.
And I believe I'm gonna take December 10th at 5:30.
December 10th. You stamp that on my forehead.
Do you...
Buildings and grounds. Our meeting is Monday, the 25th, at 5:00. End.
Do you have a question?
Community engagement?
Um, yeah, I just want to report out a little on our meeting. I think Gray talked a little bit about it. One of the decisions that we made was to include community conversations as part of our community engagement meeting, to kind of open up the first 15 minutes or half hour or however, you know, to kind of make it a regular thing where community members could come and ask questions and talk to us about things. And then we talked about themes, and so Lenny, you'll be happy about this. Our next community conversation will be on December 18th at 6:00, and we're gonna talk about some ideas to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Mill River. So we're hoping to engage some community members who might be interested in coming in and talking with us about that, but at least we'll bring the topic up. The second thing that we worked on was back when the bylaws had gotten passed, we had, you know, I had noticed that there really weren't roles and responsibilities for community engagement committee, and I kind of felt like, I don't know what we were doing, so I thought maybe we'd look at that. We came up with four roles and responsibilities based on the VSPA essential work of Vermont school boards, and we really, we want definitely to make sure the whole board realizes community engagement is a full board responsibility and the, and what the role of the community engagement committee is in supporting the board. So we came up with encourage the community to participate in vision planning, solicit community input regarding board governance, increase community knowledge of issues, successes, and challenges, and maintain goodwill by building relationships, visiting schools, attending school activities, and participating in community conversations. And so I talked to Brian about how we would do this, and we would like to put this, put it on the agenda for the next meeting to edit, to amend or edit the bylaws for the purpose of adding these. So do I need a...
And I think we can do, no, I don't think we need, good question. I don't think we need a motion during agenda building. We can decide if we want to put bylaws on our next agenda. So what I would do is take community engagements, roles, responsibilities, throw it in a draft document, give it to you as materials. If you have it five days in advance, a two-thirds, a two-thirds vote, our bylaws are updated. So we can do that if we choose to do that. Community engagement is ready for that.
Okay. So that, my work is done here?
Yes.
That's it?
Thank you so much.
Oh, wait, oh, I did have one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
We had a discussion about the PTO meetings, you know, Jen mentioned her parent meetings, and we thought it might be a good idea to encourage board members to, to attend those, and Pat has agreed to add those to the activity calendar that we've been sending out to people monthly.
Great.
And thank you, Pat, for volunteering. Or do we volunteer you? I'm not sure. But, thank you anyway.
Okay, and now I am done.
The next is finance. Do you want to read the...
I'll read the numbers. Okay. So we have accounts payable warrant dated 11/20/2024, general fund FY '25, an amount Another from the general fund FY '25, in the amount of $22,269.74. After-school program FY '25, in the amount of $3,454.2. Lunch fund FY '25, in the amount of $3,604.47, totaling $522,620.96. Student activities, Mill River, in the amount of $383.48. I would ask for a motion to approve that as presented.
I'll make that a motion.
There's a second?
I'll second.
So many people. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's everybody.
Okay. Next, I have payroll warrants dated 11/20/2024, FY '25, first one in the amount of $673,153.97. Second one in the amount of $7,454.73, totaling $680,608.70. So I would ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make that a motion.
All right, second? All right, any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor? Next.
Can I ask a report out on...
Ren transact other legal business.
Well, it has to do with those financial reports that, that we just approved. I had, we had gotten a question from somebody at one of our community engagement committees about who checks to make sure those numbers are what they are? How do we, how do, how do they come about? Is that something you could talk about a little bit real quick, just to have that on the record?
Absolutely. So something that we'll get eventually from Stan will be our audit report. And what our audit report is gonna do is gonna look at several different categories of how we do what we do here in the business office. One of those is gonna be our internal controls. And our internal controls are gonna be the things that we have in place to ensure that when a check is cut for a certain vendor or person, that that check is appropriate and for something that actually, you know, service is rendered or something purchased. So those internal controls would be something like, you know, two people always being involved in a process so that one person couldn't go and do the work of creating a check by themselves. So there's always a couple of set of eyes on every process in the business office. If we did not have the appropriate, you know, generally accepted internal controls in place, our audit report would note that. So the board would become aware of those things pretty quickly. When we do our reorganization meeting, too, I think we talk about those internal controls and we sign off on that as a board, having things in place to make sure that, that those are all done above board. Is that, is that enough?
Yeah, I think that'll help.
The other thing, and I could, I could have understood it incorrectly, but not all boards read out those numbers. It's my, I, I could be wrong, but I thought in one of my VSPA video things, I feel like the act of you signing it and the act of the chair signing it is the board recognition of that, but, and some boards choose to read it out and some do not. I could be totally mistaken, but that is what I got from one of the things.
And something else we do now that you mention it, we had a request a year or a year and a half or so ago, somebody said, hey, we've traditionally always had like two people come in and review all the pay orders. So two board members, the clerk historically would do it, and then we had one or two other people who always appreciated getting their eyes on it themselves. And the request was, well, can you just send that to everybody? So you used to get these top sheets that I read, and that was it, but we changed our practice to give you all the pay orders, so you can even review those. The treasurer comes in and reviews those, the clerk historically would review those. Well, now you have them all. So that's just one more way of, you know, getting that in front of more people, so if something looks funny, there's...
Transparency and, yeah, when, when we did that, there was questions like, what is, what is the ASP and what is, what is the abbreviation for some of the lunch things? And we were like, just share it out, we can go behind the, the next page and go, oh, I understand what that means, and I understand what that total is.
You can see every check that was cut to whom, which I think is great.
Yeah, that's really helpful.
The thing that I messed up during agenda building is that we didn't have a little note for fine, or for negotiations, which we are going to start negotiations on...
December 5th.
That's what we started with.
Support staff. No committee meeting scheduled, but we will be meeting with the association representatives, yeah.
Nick?
Do I need to make a motion for you to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if I can make a motion that we have Josh, the chair, signing for the chair on tonight's payworts.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Great. Excellent. Any other legal business that we need to discuss? Lovely. Agenda building would be the next thing. So we know we want to do bylaws?
Yeah, I'll throw that on there. That's okay with everybody, we do bylaws, that'll be a quick one.
Are we gonna have, do we have the finance meeting before that?
We, no, we won't.
It's the one after that.
Correct, yeah. Equity, equity update is on our calendar, so checking in on equity policy and progress there. Mill River math is up as far as departments go.
Can I, speaking of equity...
Yep.
Um, and, and I don't know that folks have an answer here, but I noticed at Mill River that they only have supervision after school for the rock climbing club. And so if you wanted to participate in open gym, you had to leave at 2:45 and come back. That strikes me as not being very equitable.
So is there, so the question is, is it a, like, is there a rule that it has to be in, like a, like a after school specifically?
I wonder if folks didn't know the open gyms were happening and that was, that was an oversight, because...
Yeah, I, I don't know. You know, it just, it was in Sean's newsletter.
Yeah, no run writing.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think what they were looking at, the part of the conversation that I was aware of is what they were looking at is they're covering student athletes before they're going to their practice, and that's probably 95% of the students after school who were supervised are going to a practice, so I wonder if they just didn't know the open gyms were happening. Because they don't think they're, they're...
Because they haven't started official practices for winter sports yet.
So I think probably a miscommunication and they didn't know that was happening.
Yeah.
And is that something kids sign up for or are they just opt in? I mean, that might be...
They just show up.
Yes, that might be...
Again, in my experience, open gym has been just that.
I mean, I could see that as different in that with student athletes, you have a roster, you know who the kids are, and there's some level of supervision and accountability, but if it's open gym, then...
And if you want to be on the team, you gotta be there, you gotta make...
Yeah.
You gotta do the open gym or you gotta be the practices.
Yeah, well, because you, again, from my experience, open gym, the, the coaches were there, they can't coach, but they can observe.
Oh, they're like pre, pre...
Typically, and again, I'm talking from past.
Yeah, right.
There's open gym, like the wrestling coach is there, he's not the coach, but he's like, hey, let's, let's do some warmups, let's do some stretches.
Right, right.
Same thing with basketball, you can throw the basketball.
You could have a football player there, you know, or, or a pitcher for the baseball team throwing with the catcher. I mean, open gym means just that.
Yeah, and so that's what I, that's, so my sense is there's not a limited roster of kids, it could just be in that, that might be...
We can circle back and see what happened.
Yeah, that's, I just...
Yeah. So MRU math, equity update, bylaws. Andrea had asked about a truancy report, just an update around truancy numbers, where things are.
Interesting.
And I don't think that's the biggest item. I think those four things do make for a full agenda. Are there other things that were...
I don't think necessarily for this next meeting, but I think Gray in the last meeting just wanted to see like, well, what is federal funding? Like, and I'm saying for a...
We were gonna bring that to finance committee if that's okay.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
It's a more relevant question now.
Yeah, for sure. And I think what we bring you at the finance committee meeting is not gonna be doom and gloom. I think we will talk about it, but I think the implications are not, we're not, we're not overly concerned, we're mindful. So we'll share, we'll share that at finance, yeah, yeah. No, thank you for the reminder of that, Josh.
So that's good. Do we have, do we need an executive session?
A quick, quick one I would ask for.
Okay.
So for the purposes of contracts, so we would need to make a specific finding that premature public knowledge would place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Discussion? All those in favor? Great. And then do we want, want to go into the executive session?
Yes, of course.
I'll make that motion, too.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Great.
And likely no action for the public, just so you're aware.